Good evening. It's Monday, December 19th. This is the regular meeting of the Tuckahoe Schools Board of Education. As we always do, I'd like to start by honoring America and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Do so at home.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize on behalf of the Board and Carl. We ran a little bit late in executive session, but the good news for us is we don't have to go back like we've had probably the last 10 meetings until the wee hours of the morning. I think we've set the alarm off at the school a couple of times. So it will be done after this meeting. We won't be going back to executive session. So first thing I want to do as always is get comments from our Board members. Today I'll start off with you, Danielle.
Hello, welcome everybody and welcome everybody at home. I get the pleasure of attending two of our three school performances for bands and strings and chorus. I have to say the two that I did get the pleasure of seeing were absolutely amazing. And I have to give a big shout out to Charles Duchateau because our strings program in the middle high school is like a symphony. It's absolutely amazing. These kids have come so far. I mean, I can say that because I saw it when it started and I saw it this week. And what he's done with those children is absolutely amazing and I'd like to thank him for putting so much time into that program. And that's not to say that band and chorus wasn't as polished as they always are, but the strings really hit home for me. It was amazing to see all those kids up there. And I would like to wish all of our families a happy and healthy holiday season and a happy 2017.
Thanks, Rob.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, folks here and everybody at home. Hopefully everyone's getting prepared for the holidays. I know the children kind of would like to have off this week, but same, I heard the concerts were amazing. Very, very good comments from everyone I heard who was able to attend. I would like to congratulate the teachers there. I think over the years to see what's happened with the music program in this district is amazing. I think it, those teachers deserve a lot of credit for what they've done and the children for participating. When my daughter was starting here, I think there was only 20 kids at the winter concert at Cottle and now I think we're blowing up at the seams. We're just talk about we have to make the auditorium bigger just to have everybody attend. And a couple of notes just on middle school highlights. The seventh and eighth graders went to the Paramount Theater in Peekskill, New York where they watched Edgar Allan Poe's works of art come to life. I'd like to thank Mrs. Benash and Ms. Rogan for planning the trip as well as those teachers who were chaperones on the trip. Ms. Amon and Mr. Solivan hosted this year's first principal parent tea this month and the discussion was on the topic of anxiety and the middle school child. And they had a very good turnout. I think that's something that Carl initiated and I think he continues to, for the rest of the year to have those. No, PTA? Okay, sorry.
Taking their thunder.
That's it.
Thanks, Rob. Michelle, I'm sorry.
I would just like to also wish everyone a very happy holiday season, a happy new year. This will be our last meeting before the new year. I did want to say, as everyone had said tonight about the holiday concerts, this is a wonderful time if you're at home that you can pick them up on our public access and it's a really good time for the community out large to see all that's happening here. It's always a coincidence because at the same time we have our concerts is the kickoff of our budget season for the next year. But it's good to see how our money's being spent, that we're able to still be able to support these programs. We're in many districts, over the years they have cut back and we have actually grown our program. So it's a good time to acknowledge that, to thank everyone that's made that possible, especially the community who supports our budgets. So I'd like to thank you. I did also want to add that Dr. Linehan had let me know for the high school. He also thanks all the students that, and the GO for the middle school, high school variety show and the concerts and he applauds all the students who have done so well with that. And that's it for me today.
Thanks, Michelle. Dodge?
Good evening. For December in Cottle, exciting times. The PTA did a great job with the holiday gifts at the boutique. I know my little one that's in kindergarten brought home some gifts that are under the tree, so that's very exciting. The winter concert was a great success from the Cottle Strings, the band, the chorus. Great performance. That same chorus will perform in Citi Field for the New York Mets in the spring. I attended that one last year and that's a good time and they do an awesome job with that. Also, on December 27th, a Russian-born classical pianist Katya Grineva will perform for thousands of students at Carnegie Hall in New York City. Her holiday selection of music will be enjoyed by many of Cottle, middle school and high school students and parents alike. Students attend free of charge due to the generosity of the Generoso Pope Foundation. So thank you for that. And happy holidays and a healthy new year. Thank you.
Thanks, Dodge. You know, I do want to just reiterate what everybody said about the winter concerts. You know, you talk to other school districts and families in other school districts, things like the arts are constantly being cut. People don't see value in the arts sometimes, but I can tell you right now that I think a child that knows how to play an instrument, whether it be a physical instrument or using their voices and learning how to manipulate their voices or their instruments to make beautiful sounds, just enhances their ability to learn other things. So to our teachers and to Charles Duchateau, who if you went the night of the concert and saw Charles' suit, he's a brave man, and if, I encourage you to watch the replay just to see Charles' suit. It was, it was pretty funny, but you could just see the three of them, their love for our kids is evident. It's not easy to corral a bunch of, you know, six, seven, eighth graders into a room and get them to play something together, but boy, they really do it magically. So great job by the kids and great job by the administrators and the teachers for making that happen. Just a reminder, I don't usually do this and I decided over the weekend I need to start putting reminders out. January 9th we'll be having a workshop and that workshop will again look at the capital improvement plan. We won't be discussing a lot about it tonight, but we do encourage the public to come out. We need to hear from the public about what their thoughts are on this program and this potential capital improvement. And I think that when we don't hear, it's hard for us as a Board to represent you, the community. So those of you watching TV, and a lot of you do, and you make it a point to be, because I have people come up to me telling me that they watch on TV all the time, you need, just come in person at some of these meetings and start to give us your feedback because it really is welcomed and we really would like to hear from you. The other thing I just wanted to mention is have a wonderful holiday. It's a short one. The kids are complaining, at least mine are, that they're only getting a week, but that's okay. At least they keep the education and fresh in their minds when they get back. But it's a wonderful time to kind of slow down and stay with your family and friends, travel, take a little vacation in warm weather if you're lucky, but be safe, have a wonderful new year and I look forward to talking to everybody back in 2017. So Carl?
Okay. And just a few additions to these updates. First, I had the honor of being the opening speaker at the December 7th Pearl Harbor Remembrance Ceremony, which was put together by the high school GO and our teachers. And I have to say, we hosted, we had three communities join us. We invited Tuckahoe and Eastchester. And every year we rotate one district host, so we'll pass it around. It was Bronxville last year, Tuckahoe this year. The feedback was incredible. The students from the GO spoke about experiences of our soldiers who were, who were there in the first person. They went back, they did their research and they presented and it was with emotion. It was done so professionally. I know all the local leaders and the other neighboring school district leaders were so impressed. In fact, Walter Moran in Eastchester sent us a congratulation letter saying it was one of the best Pearl Harbor Remembrance ceremonies he's ever attended. And so we really raised the bar and I got to congratulate Dr. Linehan and his staff, Dr. Mosher, Mr. Groofy provided the music and of course, our students were amazing. Also, our Habitat for Humanities program, for Humanity program is thriving. We have over 100 students participating and they were named finalists in the charity of champions. So they're doing well. That's under the leadership of Joanne Ornstein. In fact, there is a proposal to do a second session of this program and Ms. Lou and I are seeing if we can fund that and continue supporting this amazing program as we go into the new year. Also, I think it's important to know that on the curriculum front, our big initiative this year is the Writing Revolution Initiative, which is a K through 12 writing initiative. Dr. McDonald has taken over the lead for this and is providing great leadership. We had visits in all three buildings this month. Our consultants were actually in the classrooms observing writing. What happens with this very comprehensive program is that we actually provide samples, you know, as we implement strategies, we will take student samples without the names. We provide it to the consultant and they will analyze our students' writing to make sure that the strategies are showing up in their writing. They've also done classroom visits, debriefing sessions, and it is going really well and the teachers are just reporting amazing gains in our students' writing ability. And we look forward to that translating into stronger student performance in the months and years ahead. Also, I think an important announcement is that unfortunately, our pre-K program will not be housed at the Cottle Elementary School in the upcoming school year. We do have an afternoon pre-K program. We allow 21 students by lottery. People have to apply at this time actually, but with our growing enrollment, which we've been discussing for many, many months, it is just impossible to continue to have them in a classroom, which really only is for the afternoon. It's about a two and a half hour, two hour and 45 minutes session. However, the good news is we will retain our grant and we are looking to partner with local preschools. And we're putting out an RFP at this point through Ms. Lou's office and our hope is that someone will partner with us where we can offer a program to those families who enter the lottery and are selected. Again, only 21 are selected. So we're looking for options and we're hopeful that the day will come where we finish our capital project, we have added space and we can bring those pre-K students back here where we believe they belong. Then I have a few other comments. One is the APPR plan, but Steve, I'll wait because I think that's on the agenda.
It might be in the consent agenda though, if I'm not mistaken.
Presentation.
Oh, presentation, okay.
So I'll hold off on that for now. And lastly, just to all the families and our students and our faculty, just wishing you a joyous and happy holiday season. Really enjoy with your families. We wish you all the best and we'll see you back here after New Year's.
So just a quick question because I don't want people to panic. I think they understand, but I want to be very clear. The pre-K program for next year is not as of January, it would be as of September 2017.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Just if you have a pre-K kid in there, I don't want you to...
No, our students that are with us now are good through June and this would be for next year's cohort.
Just clarify.
Sure.
Okay, thanks Carl. So our Director of Finance and Facilities, Lee?
Hi, thank you. So this month, we started working with our Budget Advisory Committee, starting to get prepared for the budget that we're preparing for the district that will be voted on next May. We had a committee with several new members. So at our first meeting, we took a look at our budget calendar, we reviewed budget terminology, and we took a look at the current status of our budget to date this year. We also discussed the enrollment estimates for the district, which as we've been hearing everywhere are going up, and what that might mean in terms of impact on the budget. And we took a look at the tax cap scenario that is imposed upon us by New York State. The outlook, just for the Board's information and the community's information as well, is that although it's called a 2% tax cap, it is in effect really not necessarily that. It's 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. And at this point in time, if things remain unchanged, we're looking at slightly under a 1% increase in our ability to raise the tax levy. So 1% is a little better than last year, but it's still not a very large amount of money to roll over for next year. So we're going to have to be creative and very careful about how we look at expenses for next year. So the Budget Advisory Committee will be working with me and with Faith Sparks, our treasurer, to give us input and give us suggestions as to how to analyze the budget and look at what we can do going forward. And we'll be reporting back to you as we continue. We have another meeting scheduled in January and then again, February and March.
Great. Thanks, Lee. Any comments on the facility part of it or nothing to report today?
In terms of that, no, we haven't had any meetings since the last.
Great, thanks. So I move over to our wonderful PTA, Allison. Do you have anything for us today? I'm sure you usually have a laundry list, which is great. Not today, I put you...
Sure, this time. As Rob mentioned, we had our principal's breakfast with the middle school where we had, we, the discussion was about anxiety. It was really well attended and such a great discussion. We actually have to continue it next month. We also had a principal's breakfast at the high school, which was also well attended and that was just really informational for what's going on in the high school. We had our boutiques that, down at Cottle, which are one of my favorite events to volunteer for. It's so great to see all the little kids shopping for their parents, they absolutely, for their families. They absolutely love it. And the only thing we have upcoming right now for the next month, because of the holidays, we slowed down a little bit, are we're selling Aladdin, tickets to see Aladdin on Broadway. We have great attendance so far. We have about 80 participants coming. It's not a fundraiser. We're just charging a group discounted rate for the tickets, for premium mezzanine seats, and we have an exclusive talkback with the cast afterwards. And that's going on right now and they're almost sold out. So if anybody's interested, I would send you our flyers in as soon as possible. And that's about it. We just want to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thanks, Allison. And as a someone who's seen that show, you gotta go. It's amazing. And the cast is awesome.
Yes.
It's the only show I ever saw on Broadway where they gave an artist a standing ovation in the middle of the show. It was amazing. So, and one of our parents, Anne Britt Duchateau, we talked about Charles, she's the conductor on that show. So I'm sure she'll make sure our kids get a great experience.
She's promised that she's going to get us a great talkback.
Yeah, she's great. She's really great. She loves helping out. So thanks, Anne Britt, if you're out there as well. This is our fir-, oh, Tuckahoe School Foundation, forgive me. They do so many wonderful things. I don't see anybody here, but Rob, do you want to?
Yeah, no, they were just, had their meeting. They sent out their thank yous again to everybody who helped that night, the casino night. They had a great turnout. They sent out their thank yous and are very appreciative. Now they're just looking for the feedback from the teachers and the administration to see who's going to get the grants and how they'll be applied.
Great, thanks. And thanks for all the thing that everybody does there. And you know, to all the parents out there and community members that step up to both the PTA and the Tuckahoe School Foundation behind the scenes and we don't really see them at these meetings, thank you so much for all you do. And we know it's all for the kids. So Carl, our APPR plan presentation.
Okay.
I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. The good news is our district was approved by New York State Education Department back in November for our new updated APPR plan. And there's a new law, 3012D. The previous plan was under 3012C. And our plan, our previous plan was actually posted as a model by New York State. So we had, we had a good foundation to work from. I spent many months working with our teachers and I see Angela Georgie here. Thank you, Angela. You served on that committee and our administrative team as well. And I think we have a very solid plan. We did receive some advice from Southern Westchester BOCES and ours actually closely resembles a lot of their ideas as well. But basically, just a quick outline, you know, it's broken down into two equal parts, 50/50. 50% of the teacher and administrator's ratings are based on, for teachers, their classroom observations. So our non-tenure teachers do receive three observations per year. One is announced, which means the administrator will, you know, work out a date and a time with that teacher in advance and discuss what, what the administrator will observe. But then two are unannounced, where the administrator can basically show up and just see what is happening. And then there is a follow-up post-conference that happens afterwards. And the three combined do amount to 50% of the teacher's final APPR score for the school year. For tenured teachers, which in most cases occurs after four years of working with us, once we grant tenure to a teacher, they do drop to two observations per year. One is announced, one is unannounced. And again, they amount to 50%. For the principals, they are not called observations, they are called school visits. So Dr. McDonald and I will be the lead evaluators for the administrative team and we will be going in various activities. It could be a parent presentation. Allison spoke about the middle school presentation. It could also be watching an administrator work with a teacher directly, conduct a faculty meeting, run a professional development session. We have a lot of really good ideas, but it pretty much works the same way where 50% of their final evaluation will be based on what we observe and the evidence we collect from the observation. Now, in both categories, administrators and teachers, the other 50% will be based on student performance on test scores. Now, the state is not allowing us to use, and this is important for the community to understand, we cannot use the grades three through eight ELA in math for the next two years. Beyond that, they may allow us to start using those exams. You may be aware that there has been some controversy around the implementation of the new exams. There have been some boycotts throughout New York State. We, here in Tuckahoe, had somewhere between, you know, 20, 25% of our parents who have asked that their students not participate over the past few years. We're hoping that changes now that they are no longer part of the teacher's rating. I think years from now, when those tests, when we're more comfortable with them and they're more refined, then we may revisit that. So what are we using? We're using for our district, all the region's exams in the high school. So the state region's exams are allowable under the new plan. And also, grade four and grade eight have state science exams. So we're taking whatever basically the state allows and we're taking an aggregate of all of those scores and everyone, and our philosophy behind this is that we all contribute to learning. And even a music teacher contributes to learning math. And Charles Duchateau talked about, you know, storytelling when, when, when you're performing and how there's a rising action and the literary elements of music and conveying your ideas through music. So I think this all-in type philosophy is something that's good for Tuckahoe and I, again, I thank the teachers and the principals for working with us. And I know the staff will embrace this. We've rolled it out. Dr. McDonald has gone around and presented to each faculty. We're using an updated Danielson rubric, which is the 2013 rubric. So it's been a shift and a lot of work has gone into this, but I think the results will be very positive. So it was a change that we weren't expecting, but I think we've made the most of it and we're now aligned with state ed. We've also received something that's called an independent evaluator hardship waiver. What that means is part of the plan, they require districts to use an outside administrator to come in and observe teachers as well as principals. A lot of districts pushed back and said, look, this is going to create a hardship. You know, we haven't, we didn't have time to budget for this. We didn't have time to plan for this and you impose this plan rather late. So the state has granted waivers. So we applied for, and actually were approved for that waiver, which gives us the option. We may still decide to use an outside person in certain areas, but we're not required to do it at least for this year. So the plan is posted on the website for anyone who cares to take a closer look. It'll remain there and we're looking forward to, you know, a positive impact with our professional staff as a result. And that's it.
Any, any questions from the Board? We will be approving this in the consent agenda today.
Yes.
I just ask, what is the estimated cost for the outside evaluator?
Michelle, good question. You know, I reached out to BOCES recently to see if this is a service they would consider providing districts. They have, they're researching it, but they haven't set it up yet. So if we can do something through BOCES, and I think eventually, you know, they're granting waivers now in the early years, but eventually, they may not grant waivers and you may be required to do this. I do believe there's probably enough retired administrators out there and trained people who may be willing to do this, you know, on a limited basis with different districts. But there is no pricing. Now, you could of course, contract with someone just privately and that is another option. You know, again, I, what I would expect would be a retired person, you know, who may want to only work, you know, two days a week or three days a week, but has a wealth of experience and knowledge. That would probably be the best person because they also have to be certified and they required to get all the same training that we've received. So we don't have any pricing is the short answer.
The waiver bought us time now, basically?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, great. So Carl, we got one more for you. The Preliminary Smart Schools Investment Plan Overview.
Oh, okay. Actually, that's...
It's Ellen, I'm sorry.
On to Dr. McDonald. She's worked very hard on this.
This is exciting.
This is exciting because I get to tell you that we get to use other people's money. So this is always fabulous.
I was happy to say that.
To remind those and those who don't know, the Smart Schools Bond Act was enacted in 2014 and we did apply and did earn a little over $222,000 that can be used in certain categories that have to do with technology and also with safety, high-tech security features. And so we've been spending last spring and this fall with the Technology Committee, with our peer tech coaches, with our Director of Finance and Facilities, with our security people, trying to figure out how should we spend this $222,000. And we've come up with a preliminary investment plan that will be out for comment for the next month or so. We're actually going to hold a public hearing for it at our January 23rd Board Meeting, so slightly over a month from now, where hopefully we'll have numbers a little more, more firm, but it'll be posted tomorrow for people to review. And there are categories that you can spend this money on. And just to let you know, how does this money happen to flow, is that it is a reimbursement structure. So we need to pay for the items first and then we submit that to the state and we get paid back. They promised that it would be a 90-day turnaround. We are on a later trajectory on this than some other districts who jumped on it immediately at the beginning of the year and they are already seeing their money. Districts who have put in are seeing their money within 90 days so far. So we're, we're very happy to hear that because as long as we do this work within a fiscal year and our cash flow is okay, according to Ms. Lou, then we can start these projects. There is no deadline for using this money. So we can put it off for five years. We could do it the day after we get the whole plan approved. So just to give you some highlights of where so far we have chosen to put this money, there are categories and the two that we chose to put this money into at this time are classroom technology and high-tech security features. So under classroom technology, we've selected two main areas. One is we really need to upgrade our servers. We tried to look at some infrastructure or some larger purchase items as opposed to items that would be within our naturally occurring annual budget. And so in order to replace our servers with some redundancies and multiple virtual servers, that's going to run us about, right now, about $70,000 of that 222. The other piece of classroom technology that we're seeing is the aging of our smartboards. And as time goes on, we've been spending time as a technology committee with a, what's the next smartboard? What do we replace them with? So we've put into this budget right now about $86,000 for interactive boards of some nature. We are required through this process to list the exact model number that we intend to purchase, but we can modify that later as long as the funding stays within the same category. So we have picked a version, but five years from now, I would never purchase the same item that's available today. So we've kept it in a category of interactive write boards so that we can change the actual model as time changes and products change. So that's the two pieces that are inside classroom technology. The other part that we really wanted to spend money on was some high-tech security features. So we've, currently, what we're looking to do is two different aspects of security. One is we've had Scarsdale Security in to look at our camera systems and we have identified some areas here in the middle high school that could use more visual coverage in terms of the camera system. So right now... So right now, we have a ballpark estimate from them, that that's about thirty thousand dollars worth of work. We're working on getting tighter numbers for that, for when we come back in a month to, to give you a more detailed plan. And the other piece of security that we've been speaking about district-wide is the ability for all classrooms to get access to emergency services from within the classroom. So we're looking to spend another about thirty, thirty-one thousand on voice-over-IP VoIP systems that look like telephones, but they're also public address systems, so from certain phones, you have codes that can then speak into every classroom, they could also function as an outgoing line in the emergency for a teacher, that they can put in and get an outside line to outside emergency service if they need it, 'cause right now, we don't have that access in all of our classrooms, and we would like to make that consistent across the whole district. So that's sort of the two big buckets, buckets, the four main pieces. It does not by any means replace every smart board in this district, you'd need way more than two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to do that, they came in over time, and, and it will take us time, but as we look at the aging of, of our boards, we feel confident this will at least get us through the next round of, of replacements, and then we keep looking for additional funding as we go.
Great, thanks, Ellen. Questions by anybody? Very thorough, thank you, very interesting, great stuff.
Can I just ask, Ellen?
Sure.
You said that the funds are reimbursed, so-
Yes.
Does everything have to be pre-approved before we go forward with it?
If you- The investment plan itself needs to be pre-approved by the state, so they have to approve the entire concept and the categories that we wish to use. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, so the state-
Like the security features, they would be, they're-
Yes, so they would have to make sure that what we chose really fits in the official categories, and from the districts that have already gone through the full process, I do believe we will go back and forth anywhere between five and a dozen times to make sure that we word everything exactly how they want it worded, and then we'll have our categories set, that then, once we have our cash flow, that we know we can do certain parts of the project at a time, we can do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
You're welcome.
So some of the old business, Lee, I already asked you about the facilities. No update right now.
Not at this time, we're looking to have some more meetings in early January and present again to the public, and get some more information back from our architects as well, that we can tighten up the information that we provide.
Moving on, the Cywinoy Boulevard update, Carl?
Okay, no significant update, except that, you know, we're, we're at the point now where the town of Eastchester has asked us for a sort of reciprocal arrangement, where, in exchange for Cywinoy, they could use some of our facilities, particularly during the summer months. What Lee and I have been working on is just analyzing our own needs, so we, for example, met with the task program, we looked at their numbers, and their summer program has grown. We also have a reciprocal arrangement with the Cywinoy Country Club, they provide, I believe it's about sixty parking spaces for the district, which parking is in high demand in this neighborhood. In exchange, we do give them some summertime in, in our elementary school for their summer camp program. But the bigger concern, I think, or the overriding concern, I should say, is the, the capital project that we're planning, and, and how that, you know, may impact us, us, you know, our ability to, to open up our doors to other programs. So it, it's a good discussion, the, the dialogue is open, but there, there's no actual movement, but I do hope for something soon in the new year. Steve?
Questions by anybody? Okay, thanks, Carl. So we're gonna move over to the consent agenda items. A motion to approve the consent agenda items, number two through thirteen, do you have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor?
I did have a comment on the minutes, and actually, they were, I don't know, let me see, I believe it's number four, it's the minutes of the eleven twenty-two special meeting, and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that there's really nothing in there of any additional of the comments, or people who attended, and I understand from time to time, we have to have these kinds of meetings for things that are timely, but more so why I think the minute should be more specific as to what was discussed, and especially, you know, public participation. I even had to ask at the meeting for something to be submitted in as, as part of the agenda, as a part of the minutes, and nothing is reflected there. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
So minutes, um, thank you. Minutes are supposed to be a report of the, the voting, and when we do have a recognition of audience and that kind of thing, I'll generally put the person's name and the topic that they spoke to, but not necessarily the back and forth. But the only requirement is that it covers-
Right. I just think going forward, especially when it's that type of a meeting, if we could in the future, be a little more, because otherwise, you know, there, it's, it's not transparent enough, people don't, you know, they're not televised, and the minutes are the only thing that reflects what happened at the meeting.
Legally, it's not a, it's not a requirement.
Okay, well then, maybe we, do you want a board discussion, even if it's legally not required, do we want to, or do we not want to add more? I'm not saying specifically about that one, it's passed now, I'm saying moving forward.
Right. From my experience with the attorneys, we've been advised to limit what we put in the minutes, which is why, like, I might list the people's names and the topic that they spoke to, but not necessarily their actual words. But that's what we have been advised from our last attorneys.
So I, why don't we revisit this in discussions with our, with Ron and Keenan Bean, and see maybe what they advise, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Not on that topic, no.
Okay. Any other comments about the consent?
I think there's something to be helpful for the public, and we've talked about it in the Budget Committee, and we've talked about it with the capital improvements project. One of the items here, number ten, is the tax surcharge. Maybe, Lee, not to put you on the spot, but you explain it quite well, and I think, just that we have a different audience tonight, I think this is a good example, 'cause it's a pretty significant number. I think it'll help people understand that in the past, we didn't have a reserve fund for this type of expense. Now we have one, and we've talked about that, so I think it'd be a good opportunity to explain it, and then make people aware that these are the types of things that we really can't forecast. They kind of come in as they come in, just so they understand when we talk about this reserve fund that we have as a budget line, and where it comes into play. Maybe if you could take a minute.
Sure, you've already started the discussion quite well, so thank you on that. But we do get them, we have tax surcharges going back to, I believe, two thousand nine, and they get settled over time. So typically, a commercial establishment will ask for a tax relief on their buildings or land or commercial properties based on their economic situation and the market value of their properties on a commercial side, it's a little different from a residential tax assessment. And it goes through the town, the town reviews it, attorneys from both sides review it, they sometimes often go to court and have that finalized, and then the district gets noticed. We have an attorney who reviews them as well right now, but we don't have a lot of input into the process, we just take a look and see if the way they come up with new assessments is appropriate. And each time, our attorney will take a look at either what's been going on or what's going forward, to make sure that the district's interests are represented in the way that they analyze the new values of a property. And if it's determined that their assessment should be modified, the district will be billed for prior years, taxes that were already paid. And the district has been prudent and put monies into a tax surcharge reserve fund, so that when these things come up and are approved by the courts, we do have money in a reserve that we can use, instead of having to go and bond for it and pay interest over time, we can take the monies out of our reserves and pay for them as we go. So in this particular case, it was a seventy thousand dollar reduction or refund that we are paying out to the condominium, and we will take that out of our reserve fund and refund the monies as appropriate. And that should help us budgeting going forward as well.
Thank you, Lee. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? Opposed? I'm gonna skip over to the business of the board. G, item number one, accept a donation, whereas a Tocco Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the Tocco High School, and whereas a district would like to accept such a donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation from the class of two thousand sixteen in the amount of four hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents, and, and for fitness and recreational equipment. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? Thanks to two thousand sixteen, way to go, guys.
Yeah, I, I just like to thank our students, I really have to credit them, you know, they came up with a theme of, of health and fitness, and how they could enhance the experience of, of our students. So we have things such as, you know, ping pong tables, which are set up now for lunch and recess, so they can get some exercise, have some healthy competition, and, and the students really seem to be enjoying this, and, and so I, I really credit them for being thoughtful about their donation.
So can they challenge the superintendent of schools to a ping pong game?
It would be not much of a challenge, I certainly would lose.
All right. So that's discussion, all in favor? Approve an agreement, resolve to approve an agreement with a writing revolution for the, oh, did I skip one?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Item number two, whereas the Tocco Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the Tocco High School, and whereas a district would like to accept such a donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the Eastchester Youth Soccer Association in the form of new varsity girls soccer uniforms. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Danielle, discussion?
I just note that last year, they donated to the boys, so it's nice to see that.
Nice job, guys, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? And item number three, resolve to approve an agreement with a writing revolution for the period of July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for professional development services for administrators and teachers at a rate of seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars. In fifteen sixteen, the total expenditure was thirty-one thousand seven fifty. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Item number four, resolve to approve an independent contracting services with ABC Tutoring for the period of December, from December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, through June, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for tutoring services at a rate of fifty-five dollars an hour, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. We didn't have this last year. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Thank you, Dodge. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Under personnel, number one, appoint a mentor. Resolve to appoint Mariella Ferguson as a mentor for the period of December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, based on a number of hours served for a maximum of fourteen hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Number two, approve a side lever, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School Districts hereby approve the side lever agreement dated December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, by and between the district and the Tocco Teachers Association, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, approves payment thereunder and authorizes the superintendent to do the same. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Number three, decrease the teaching load. Resolve to decrease the teaching load of Vanessa Nastrey by point zero four FTE effective November twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Appoint an aide. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Maria Del-Gais? To a probationary appointment effective December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, through December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, as a teacher aide at the William E. Cottle School on a Step Four of the CSEA salary schedule. Do I have a motion? Danielle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Number five, accept of resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Caitlin Partenza, effective November twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Number six, accept of resignation. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby accepts the resignation of, for the purposes of retirement of Judith Scott from employment as a teacher assistant with the district, effective December thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Danielle, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So I want to apologize, because we, we do not have a lot of people here, I forgot to recognize the audience, give the audience a chance to speak before this started, so this is not the second recognition of the audience, thank goodness this was a short agenda, so if anybody does want to speak, they didn't have to wait too long, and I, I really do apologize for that. Do I have anyone here who would like to make any comments? I'm so sorry.
Just on behalf of the Tocco Teachers Association, we'd like to say happy holidays to all of our students, family members, community members, the board, thank you so much for a good year so far, and again, we look forward to two thousand seventeen, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the administration and the teachers as well. Anybody else? Great, well, I wish everybody a wonderful holiday and a happy new year, we'll see you in January. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Dodge, second. Danielle, all in favor? Opposed? Great, thank you, everybody, good night.